We'd like to say good evening to everyone and thank you all for coming out to our first monthly meeting in the month of May to conduct the City of Greensboro business. This, as always, this is the time where we will take out and do a prayer as our introduction to our meeting. If there's a part that you wish not to participate in, we'll ask that you would excuse yourself now. If not, then we'll ask, I'm sorry, Mr. Neal, to open us up with prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Continue to lead us and guide us and give us wisdom to guide this city. In Jesus' name, pray.
Amen, amen. First of all, let me, let me take this time to, to welcome our new city manager, Mr. Jonathan Sims, and our new city clerk, Mr. Neil Butler. Welcome, welcome to the team. We're glad to have you all. Let the minutes reflect that everyone is present on tonight. That'll move us right on down to number three on our agenda, which is the approval of our April seventeen, twenty twenty-three regular session minutes. And council, once you're ready to vote on those, I ask that you would raise your right hand, signifying that you're ready to vote. I entertain a motion and a second to accept the regular session minutes for April seventeen, twenty twenty-three.
Motion. Second.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much. Brings us down to number four, the approval of April seventeen, twenty twenty-three executive session minutes. Council, there's a copy of those minutes in front of you. Once you've read them, could you slide them to, pass them to your left, signifying that you're ready to vote? Mr. Johnson, I ask that you prepare yourself to get ready to do your report. Intertain a motion and a second to approve the executive session minutes for April seventeen.
Motion to approve.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Unanimous decision. Thank you so much. Number five on the agenda, supervisor's report for the street department, coming from Mr. Johnny Porter.
All right. How you doing?
Best day ever.
Okay. I'll start off with the employees of the city street department. We currently have six employees with the street department and a need for two more in the near future. We recently had one employee out on medical leave for about a month, which I filled in driving the backhoe. He came back today and we should be able to get caught up on some of the things we got behind on, which include the route, keeping the landfill in order, ditches and asphalt work. As far as asphalt and pothole go, so far this year, we've been only able to complete a few places of asphalt, two on Way Up Lake, one on Northeast Street. There's still other section that we have to repair. We've been addressing those in the near future. Also, there's still road resurfaces that need to be done and potholes to be filled. One of the roads that need resurfacing is a road that councilman, councilwoman River requested over in Milltown, and we haven't been able to get that yet. The cleanup day, it finally completed. It took us over two and a half weeks to get that done. We end up using, filling eleven dumpsters. It was a little delay in getting dumpster delivered to, to get it up off the ground. We end up filling one tractor trailer full of tires, and we finally got that completed. The thing about the cleanup week, it put us behind on the regular route pickup, picking up land leaves and that type of stuff, and we usually skip that while we're using the backhoe to get up the cleanup. But last week, we was able to go through the route and complete the route in full and get back on track of that, so we should be good to go on that. We'll continue cutting grass and doing curbing. We did some grass cutting today and curbing down on Fifteenth, and we'll continue that too. So with that in mind, I'll take any question that any of you may have.
Mr. Johnson, you said there was a street that needed repaving or resurfacing in the Milltown area. What's the name of that street?
Sycamore Street was requested last year to be redone. A section of Sycamore, and basically Sycamore, is that the road has deteriorated so much that it's down to the dirt and the rock, and when you say go there and patch the pothole, there's no doubt to do a pothole. The road just needs resurfacing, and that's one of the streets, road, that's on the list that I'd turn in a few years back.
What's the length of that street? Do you know?
I, I would say point five at most.
About half a mile. I don't have any more questions. Any questions coming from the council at this time?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Porter, you said you have current six employees.
Right.
And you need two.
Right.
You need two full-time or two part-time?
Actually, every department except the street department have full-time more than, most of their people full-time. We only have two. I'm not talking about AC or Sam, my actual street department, and those two would be Chris Schalkeford and, you shouldn't have me, that. It's Chris and Ryan Ray. Those are two full-time. The other ones are part-time, and if we get two more, then more than likely, the current part-time would move up to full-time.
I got you. Thank you, Mr. Porter.
I have a follow-up question with that, Mr. Porter. Mr. Schalkeford is the, is the last guy that you hired, correct?
Yeah, he would be the last guy. The cargo operator.
Now, I saw someone new this morning. Did you hire somebody else?
You probably saw one of the community service workers.
Okay, you got community service worker, okay. Any more questions coming from the council?
I have a question since we're talking about the potholes and stuff. I know the state road right in front of Hocken BBQ is the state road, but have we had an update, Larry? I know we had reached out to them about, again, we got to get that field some kind of way as quick as possible. Are we still waiting to hear back from the state, or?
The state is, has an intersection improvement plan there, and the last time I talked to them, I told them that that needs to be concrete there, like it is at the, at the intersection of Manning Broad, because the way that those truck tires twist, they, they eat that asphalt up. That's, that's probably been a couple of months ago since I talked to them, but there is an intersection improvement plan that DOT has for that intersection.
Okay. Can we get back into it with them and see what, get a follow-up on the date and time? Because that's a lot of complaints and stuff that I know a lot of us around the table are getting, and we keep telling people that it's a state road, but, you know, can we at least get back to them and let them know exactly the time and frame so we can get back to the public and let them know where we at with this issue here?
All right.
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Porter, do you have anyone that, for a bag up to drive the backhoe? I know when your employee was out, your regular employee was out, you found yourself doing spot duty that pulled you away from your supervisory role. Have you found time to get in by the cross train to be that secondary operator of that machine?
Larry and I talked to, well, Larry and I mentioned it, I talked to a guy, he kind of agreed through the week. Yeah, I tried, and last Sunday morning before eight o'clock, he texted me and said he wasn't going to do it, so he didn't feel comfortable doing it, so I know I don't have anyone else to do that.
Did you offer him any type of incentive, Mr. Porter?
If I had to take, I would show you, but he basically said, if it ain't a certain amount of money, he wasn't going to do it, you know?
Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So I would like to just to recognize our supervisor, Johnny, there. Today, we had a meeting, and he kind of talked about some of the long-term plans that we're going to be looking at in the street department, as well as we'll be looking at operations to ensure that we have adequate coverage, and if there's cross-training that's needed in our departments, we'll be making sure that it takes place.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Porter. Number six on the agenda, city attorney. Or somebody here from Bureau of Business?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'll take this one. Before the council tonight is a request to rezone property. You've got it in your packet. This is the Old Depot project. Tonight, I believe the applicant, Nathan McGarrett, is here. Your planning commission took up the request to rezone the property to CPUD Commercial. They adopted it unanimously, and I would direct, if y'all have any questions for the applicant, Mr. McGarrett is here. If you have any questions from us, I'll respond based on the report provided.
I didn't notice McGarrett being back there. McGarrett, come on up. You and I had a conversation. You want to explain to the council what, what your plan looks like for, for the brewery?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we've been trying to figure out some type of redevelopment strategy for the, there are actually two depots. It's the old freight depot that's made of a brick, obviously a wooden post and dial constructed building, and then there's the passenger depot that was built around nineteen sixteen that's made out of brick, and we were trying to figure out a redevelopment strategy for both, and what we've come up with is effectively doing a makers market, and that would be in the wooden portion, and then in the brick portion is kind of utilizing the Airbnb, VRBO development, and where that was born from was the brewery had a, we had a need for brides that were, to have some type of dressing space, and then also a green room for any type of event space for the bands and musicians to have some of their own kind of quiet time before performances. So that's kind of what began developing the, the brick portion is the Airbnb kind of model. So it would be five units inside of the, inside of the depot, and then the, the wooden portion, we call it a makers market, but it's pretty much a, it'll have the ability to host multitude, probably about twenty-four different spaces that would be leased to a collective retail development. So you would go in, and you've seen, there, there are some examples in downtown Atlanta and also in Athens, but we're trying to focus on products that are made by people. If you'd be willing to answer any questions.
Any question coming from the council? Have you all had time to read over the handout that Mr. Postel sent? Everybody feel comfortable with it? At this time, I entertain a motion and a second to approve the rezoning request to allow for a multi-use facility on parcel G zero six zero 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 two zero zero zero. Address is two oh fourth Northwest Street, Greensboro, Georgia.
Motion to approve. Second.
Been motion to approve and second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much. Unanimous decision. Brings us down to number seven, recommendation to Greensboro City Council concerning a conditional use request to allow for outdoor storage on parcel zero eight six zero 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 seven four eight, and that's located at fourteen ninety-eight Airport Road, Suite B, Greensboro, Georgia.
Mr. Mayor, this application is for the placement of outdoor storage at the location that the mayor provided. Your planning board met and recommended unanimous approval with the condition that the code otherwise be followed, and I believe the applicant is here today. If there's any questions from the board.
How are you, sir?
I'm good, thank you.
Would you like to explain to us what it is that you're asking for?
Certainly. By the way, just a little bit about myself, I used to be the plant manager at DIPCO in town, so I've had some experience in dealing with the Greensboro community, and now I'm opening a business, which is, it's called Flex Box Mobile Storage, and we manufacture and lease portable storage containers. Most of you probably know or have seen pods that are out there, that those are those mobile storage containers, and so that's what we do. We lease them to the public after we manufacture them. So what we're looking at doing is, in that building, having the opportunity to store those on the exterior of the building after we manufacture them, and the whole purpose and intent of the business is to lease them to the public so generally they're off the property, they're out of people's locations, and, but when we manufacture them, as we build more, we manufacture them in increments of like twelve units, and so after we manufacture them and before they go off for lease, we would like to be able to store them on the exterior of the building. The, it was reviewed by the planning commission, and the planning commission accepted the conditional use permit and approved it.
Counsel, have you had time to look over the handout?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yes? Everybody feel comfortable? All right, I entertain a motion at this time, motion and a second to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been second. Any further discussions? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Next on our agenda is number eight, Ms. Maria Wayne. Doesn't look like she's here. Brings us down to number nine, Ms. Katrina Breeding, addressing public comments.
I'd like to thank you for the opportunity of coming before you today. When I first requested to get on the agenda, I thought I was ninety percent sure of my position, but nothing is ever as easy as it appears in the law. So I did a little research, and now I'm ninety-five percent sure of my position, but I learned a lot. One thing that I learned is that within any meeting, there are several opportunities in public comment. Some are restricted, some are not. Now, let's take your items one through seven. All of those matters are ministerial. You're carrying out the city's business, so that means nobody in the audience can pop up and start talking about Mr. Porter's comments, so that's restricted. But then, let's take item nine, that's me. I requested to be placed on the agenda, and my subject matter is restricted to public comments. I can't start talking about the water, I can't start talking about the grass, and I can't start talking about that dead deer or a dog that was in my field, and if I do, the mayor can say, Ms. Breeding, you need to sit down. But he's a gentleman, he wouldn't say that. He would just say that that's, that's our rule. But then, let's look at number twelve, public comment. Under federal law, a person, and I don't think you have to be a resident here, it says that public can speak on any matter of governmental concern, and what I understand you all have done is to restrict that to items on the agenda, which isn't practical. But one thing, you can hardly find y'all's agenda. Sometimes I'll go and I go online, I don't see an agenda for the meeting, although, Open Records Act says you're supposed to have it. You don't have your minutes posted, the Open Records Act says you're supposed to, that's the state law, so you're in violation of that. But more importantly, let's just be practical. I don't know what the agenda is, so how am I going to be placed on the agenda? Because of my understanding that you have the agenda written at least a week before or a couple of days before, so if I don't know what it is, how am I going to ask to be placed on it? Now, that's a grave restriction. But under public comments, I can talk about any matter of governmental concern. I am only restricted if I say something offensive, like if I'm cursing and talking about your mom. But let's say I spent, I have two minutes, I spent a minute and a half talking about your mom, but I spend the other ten minutes talking about your husband. You can't, okay? You can't restrict it, and in that distinction, you should not be so proud that you can't hear somebody saying something against you. That's why you're here, to hear public concern. You have content, which means you can't restrict the subject matter, and you have view horn. You can't restrict view horn. Somebody could come up here and say, y'all are the worst things in the world, you don't know what you're doing, you need to resign, I'm going to have a recall. As long as it involves governmental business, you can't restrict. So I'm going to continue with my research, and I would just ask that you put whatever the policy is in writing. So when I call Atlanta, Augusta, Savannah, and they say, well, why don't you keep the section? I'm not going to want to refer them to the, the journal, and I don't want to refer them. I say, well, will you call one of my friends? She was there, I wasn't there. But what I ought to be able to do is to refer to it in your business, and I'm, my whole attitude has changed since I have been looking over some of your past minutes through the video, you got a lot of problems, and I'm going to tell you this, I don't know what profit it was, and I'm no prophet, but I know this, you know, he went to King, hit the car, what did he say? Get your house in order, because they're supposed to look at this, and I have a prediction that during my lifetime, there may not be a city of Greensboro, and that may be sad. I'm not saying people are going to disappear, it's going to be another name. So you all can do it, get your house in order, follow the law. It's okay if you all read it, you don't have to rely on everything everybody says, read it for yourself, there's nothing there that cannot be comprehended. But, see, you could tell me to sit down because I've already gone off of the agenda, but the bottom line is this, please, write it out. I need to know what the policy is. You can't criticize something based on something that's in the paper, and I appreciate the opportunity, and I wish the city well. Thank you.
Thank you. We're at number ten on the agenda, unfinished business. It's been brought to my attention that Mr. Monday
You can't criticize something based on something that's in the paper. And I appreciate the opportunity and I wish the city well. Thank you.
Thank you. We're at number 10 on the agenda, unfinished business. It's been brought to my attention that Mr. Mundall from the Hilltop Store is here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All officers and everybody. And I, I like this community, sir. I boarded this Hilltop. And I want to run this business. And I love this place and this community. And anything's always I follow in the community system, law, everything's. And how I can, then I help all everything's. That's all I need, sir, please help me. Now I want to sell this food, all everything's, I help the community. Anything's, if come from me, I try to help my community. I like this community. Yes.
Mr. Mundall is representing the Hilltop Store. And he's here requesting a beer and wine license.
Yes, sir.
Is there any questions coming from the council?
Just got one question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney did his background check out?
They did.
No red flags?
Any more questions coming from the council?
I have one. Mr. Mayor, are they, are they separate from MLK?
Yes, sir, it's two different owners as what I'm seeing here. You have a Mr. Socker and a Mr. Mundall. Mr. Socker is for the MLK Food Mart. And Mr. Mundall is for the Hilltop. Any more questions coming from the council? All right, I entertain a motion at this time to approve or deny the beer and wine license for the Hilltop Mart.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been second, any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much, unanimous decision. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks a lot, thank you, sir, I appreciate it, thank you, sir. Have a nice day.
Next, Mr. Socker for the MLK Food Mart. How are you?
Good, how about you?
I'm doing well.
How about everyone? Thank you so much, I'm here and this is first time, so I'm a little bit nervous. So MLK, this is onion shaker, I'll take the lease, MLK Market. And every business depend on the, like, all kind of, like, you know, grocery, like, ROI. Like, if I get the BR1 license, so I can run the business easily, otherwise it's too hard to run the business. And if I can run the business, the community people can work on this store. And whatever the community rules, I can follow them. And I'm working like grocery gas station long time. That's all I can say. And I need a help from the community people. Thank you so much.
Guess we would ask the same question that Mr. Moore asked for the other guy, Larry. Have you done the research and make sure that everybody check out?
Yes, sir, they did.
All right, at this time, any questions coming from the council? No questions, no questions. Entertainer motion and a second to approve the beer and wine license for the MLK Food Mart.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been second, any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Unanimous decision. That's all the unfinished business that I have. Counsel Moore, do you have any unfinished business?
Uh, yeah, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, could someone give us an update on the fencing for the basketball court? We discussed it about, approximately about two months ago. Still don't see the fence, what's the status on that? Mr. Sims, can you work with Mr. Postel and?
Mr. Moore, I do. Mr. Councilman Neal has been working on that project with the fencing for the basketball court. Mr. Neal, do you have an update?
Uh, it was supposed to be in next week.
Materials coming in next week? Okay, all right, thank you.
I have a question.
Hold on, Councilwoman River. Is that all, Councilman?
Yeah, that's all I have, I finished.
All right, city manager, do you have any? City attorney? New city, new city manager? Clerk, do you have any? Councilman Miller?
Nothing, ma'am.
Councilwoman River?
I do have a question regarding that, with Mr. Moore. How much is that going to cost, as a total price?
City manager, how much is it?
I'm not sure the total price, materials are nine thousand.
Counsel Smith, do you have any unfinished business?
Uh, I know we had talked about giving the employee raises and stuff. And we were waiting on the new city manager, finance director to get in and try to see where we at with the finances and stuff. So I just wanted to put that out to the public that we were still working on that. Because I had several employees mention it to me, so I didn't want to seen that it had died on the table. To let them know that we were still working and we should have some numbers and stuff up in the near future.
We have not hired a financial director yet. City manager and I, new city manager and I had a discussion over that. And hopefully we'll have some numbers put together next week so we can present to the council. And that way we can move forward. And all, just to clear that, all employees will be retro paid.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Councilman Neal? Any new business? I don't have any new business at this time. Counsel Moore, do you have anything?
Uh, nothing, Mr. Mayor.
City manager?
No, sir.
City attorney?
No, sir.
City clerk? Councilman Miller?
Nothing, ma'am.
Councilwoman Rivers?
No.
Councilman Smith?
No, sir.
Councilman Neal?
No, sir.
Brings us down to number 11, public comments. Any public comments? No one signed up for public comments, okay. Well, brings us down to number 13, the adjournment of this meeting. I entertain a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been second, any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much, Councilman Miller, ask that you pray outside on tonight.
Let us pray, gracious God, we're eternally grateful and we're so thankful that we're able to come and sit around this table, look at for the business of this your city. Pray, God, that the decision that we made this season were for the betterment of your people and your city. We ask you to continually lead and guide us in the way that you have us to go. So in Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen, thank you all so much for your time.